Call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge allegiance and the invitation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen here, Green here, before.
Here.
Ms. Ravitch.
Here.
Rindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We come out of our budget session into the council session here. Is there approval of minutes for the budget workshop of April sixteenth?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We also need a motion to approve the city council regular meeting of April sixteenth. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Be not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the city council, we ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address to the clerk. Okay, we'll move on. Adoption of agenda, any changes, Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
No, sir.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented, be in order.
So moved, support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Be not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. We have four this evening. The first one being consideration of special event activity application, St. Augustine's Parish three K charity event. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to give consideration on a request from the St. Augustine Parish for the second annual Parish Festival three K charity race event on Saturday, August eleventh, from eleven fifteen to one P M. This event was added last year in hopes of encouraging more community members and from the surrounding areas to come out and participate in the festival. It was successful last year. The administration did work with the applicant to put out the barricades. They set up the barricades the day of the race, and we also supplied them with labels through our assessor so that they could send out notices like we used to with the Romeo to Richmond race, just informing people that the roads would be shut down. And so we look to do that again. I have talked to the applicants, and this year they'll put kind of like a little letterhead type item at the top of their letter, just letting them know it's, you know, coming from the St. Augustine Parish Festival. There was some comments on, from residents last year, not quite sure what it was when they, when they got the letter, so with that change, we're recommending approval.
Would that include phone number, because that was another issue?
Um.
A letterhead and. Okay. Would you like to present anything at all? Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application from St. Augustine Parish for the two thousand eighteen three K charity race event on Saturday, August eleventh, two thousand eighteen, to allow the closure of Gleason Street from Main to Chaskey, Chaskey Street from Gleason to George, George Street from Chaskey to Gurk, Gurk from George to Gleason, and Franklin Street from Gleason to Howard, for approximately eleven fifteen to one P M. Subject to the following condition, the applicant shall mail letters explaining the race on street closures to all affected residents.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion?
Same course?
Correct, yes.
And I don't remember hearing any major problems or issues from anybody, and seemed like it went well?
I think so, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Any, anybody from public like to comment on this? Okay, back to the table. Hope for good weather. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion passes. Good luck. Item number two is consideration of adopting resolution number twenty eighteen dash four, recognition of Pastor Susie Hutchinson. Mr. City Manager.
City Council is scheduled to consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen dash four, a resolution recognizing Pastor Susie Hutchinson for her service to the community and the Richmond area chaplains group. Pastor Hutchinson is stepping down from the Richmond chaplains group and from the United Methodist Church in Richmond after serving since two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash four, a resolution recognizing Pastor Susie Hutchinson's years of service to the community and to the Richmond chaplains group.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? What I would like to see happen is the resolution made public, and I would ask if Emily, since you're a member of that church, if you wouldn't mind reading that to put it on the record.
Sure.
Right now.
Okay, right now?
Right now.
Okay.
Would you?
I can do that. Thank you. Resolution two thousand eighteen dash four, a resolution recognizing the community service given by Pastor Susie Hutchinson. Whereas Pastor Susie Hutchinson has served since two thousand fourteen at the First United Methodist Church of Richmond, and whereas Pastor Susie Hutchinson has served for four years on the Richmond area chaplains group, an organization that assists public safety departments and the residents of the community during emergencies, and whereas working with the Richmond Community Schools, Pastor Susie Hutchinson was instrumental in establishing Backpack Blessings, a program that provides food to those in need in the Richmond community, excuse me, and whereas Pastor Susie Hutchinson has earned and justly deserved this public recognition for her many years of service to our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Richmond City Council does hereby urge our citizens to join with us in extending to Pastor Susie Hutchinson our deep appreciation for her distinguished service with the Richmond area chaplains group and the Richmond community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd also like to know that her husband, David Hutchinson, was also very instrumental in the backpack program.
Very good, very good. It was a great program. Now, my understanding is, is that she's accepted another church somewhere?
Yes.
That's why she's stepping down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. We certainly appreciate all of her time given to the community. Any other comments?
Can we have Emily read that at church doing that Sunday?
Your church or?
All of them maybe.
All of them. Stager all the start times? Any public comment on this? Back to the table? All in favor, we wish her well. All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of amendments to the park rules and regulations. Mr. City Manager.
City Council is scheduled to consider approving amendments to the City of Richmond Recreation Department Park Rules and Regulations. At their March and May meetings, the Recreation Board has reviewed their rules and regulations and is recommending two areas of changes. The first is under rule fourteen, beer and wine permits. Several years ago, the city and the Recreation Board reviewed how we handled alcohol permits associated with family events at the pavilion and horseshoe pits and made a change allowing it there as long as they got a permit first. Having seen how it worked there and having seen how often family reunions are often renting both the community center and the pavilion at the same time for family reunions, that sort of thing, and for what they're renting the community center, we've had no issues with it at the pavilion or the horseshoe pits area, and actually allows us to know who has it and who shouldn't have it. We felt it was appropriate to make that change with the community center, and the Rec Board fully supported that. The second area was under rule twenty-two, which is kind of skateboards, bikes, scooters, golf carts. Certainly with the change to the golf cart ordinance that we have in town, we felt it appropriate to kind of fold that into the recreation park rules and regulations, just to kind of have where they are allowed and where they're not. And then certainly within that rule, we also give the city council and the city the out to kind of exempt special events.
Okay. Is there a motion before discussion? I'm sorry, Margot, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the City of Richmond Rec Department Park Rules and Regulations.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Looks like they did a good job on this. I know it's been talked about for quite a, quite a while. As John said, we really have not had any problems whatsoever. I know there was a lot of fear that there was going to be problems in our park, and we, I don't know that we've had any.
Not one issue.
How many years is that?
I'm aware of.
Remember how many years that's been now, since it's been legal in the pavilion?
Yes.
I was gonna say eight.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It could be.
All right, any other discussion on?
I just want to highlight one thing on the skateboard, the golf cart addition, that the golf carts are not permitted on the hike bike path.
Yeah, it says that, number six.
Yes, just so it's public people watching that are aware of that if they don't actually see the rules and changes, so.
But that's also in our ordinance when we cover the golf cart rule.
Yes, yes, I'm just highlighting it, yes.
Basically, the rule is, is wherever cars are allowed, that's where golf carts are allowed.
Yes.
They're not allowed on the grass, they're not allowed anywhere but where cars are allowed. Okay, there is a typo here on the front page. The sentence starts with, "It is recognized."
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay, come down the next line, it says surrounding. It's missing a word, and I'm not sure what word it's missing.
Okay.
You see that, Margot?
Surrounding area.
Surrounding area and including the pool.
It's missing a word after surrounding, between surrounding and and, it's missing a word.
Yeah, and I almost think Council agreeing there, surrounding area, including the pool, maybe, and get rid of.
Something to fix.
There's a, yep, I'll take care of that.
Anything from, any comments from the audience? Back to the table. Any further discussion? Be not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of farm market request from the E D C. Mr. City Manager.
The E D C has been working since the last meeting, or the, the meeting in which the city council approved the use of the municipal parking lot on Saturdays for a farm market, trying to move our farm market from Wednesday to Saturday. They came up with kind of the calendar dates with all the Saturdays, and then also kind of a, how much we would charge per week for the vendors, what type of vendors we would allow in there, and the fees to be charged to those people wanting to participate. Kind of before you tonight are two documents. The first document is this one that has kind of the graphics on the front, and then the back page kind of outlines again the cost, the time, the place, and asking them what type of vendor they are. This is for us, to the E D C members, and also Troy and myself to go out to neighboring farm markets. When we met with, like, the director from New Baltimore, she indicated you just have to go out there and cold call to get it started. And she said, for example, at their market in New Baltimore, as long as you go to the market manager first, ask permission, you can then go and hand these flyers out to farmers that are participating. So we want to kind of get this set, which allows us to go do that, and allows kind of council's approval of this document. Also, in your background brief tonight, is a tentative budget, and going through the interviews with all of the surrounding farm markets, I mean, obviously, we had no one here at ours kind of watching over it, marketing it, trying to encourage and handle all the vendors that were coming, and it went by the wayside. Those that are successful have somebody onsite handling those type of issues. And so I'll get back to that in a little bit. But essentially, this document would be, again, it'd be a fifteen dollar a week permit, or a fee to be a part of the, of the farm market, two hundred dollars for the year, so it gives them a break if they went for the whole year. There's an applicant fee, but that just handles their first and last fifteen dollar payment, so this is not really a true application fee. And then has currently Troy's name and number as the contact person for the city planner is who they would contact currently. We also talked about the type of vendors. We're limiting it to farmers slash growers, and then also food type items such as the cottage industry, where somebody's making the jams and jellies in their kitchen and, and selling them themselves at the, at the farm market, or the people that are doing that out of a licensed kitchen. Those are the two main ones that you see. You know, you'll have the farm market with the produce, and then you'll have somebody selling honey or jams and jellies, that sort of thing. Those are the focus. We're not going after like the craft vendors or the antiques or vintage market, just limiting it to that. And also potentially going after either some food trucks or carts, but with doing that, also sending out a letter to all the local area restaurants, giving them kind of first shot at that part of it. We've developed a budget through the E D C committee of thirty-four hundred dollars for the year. Any funds coming in from the fifteen dollars would take away from that thirty-four hundred dollars that we're looking for. That would help to hire somebody that could be onsite to help bring in the vendors, put them in the right place, be there to answer questions, kind of encourage people to come. Also, some money to kind of, we may need to redo that A-frame sign that was out there that was previously used. If we can find it, we believe Teresa still has it at the banquet hall, but we may have to have a graphics company put new facing on it with the new dates, things like that. And then a thousand dollars for like newspaper advertising, Facebook advertising, possibly radio, those sorts of things. And with that, Kathy Osbold is here as well from the E D C for, to answer, help answer any questions.
Kathy, you have anything you'd like to bring up right now?
Just the fact that I think with the market manager, we would like to have someone that can grow with us. We're just starting out, and we would like to find someone that is going to be very dedicated. It's not an easy job, as easy as it seems, it really isn't, and somebody that would probably give of themselves, maybe a little bit more than what we can actually pay them, possibly, but we'd like them to work closely with our committee and grow with that. And just like John had stated, we're going to keep it to food items and obviously, you know, the farmers and the produce. Eventually, we could grow into the other things. I foresee that happening, but we want to focus on it being a true farmer's market. We're a farming community, and I think that this is an excellent thing for us to become a destination with. And I think if we do it right, treat it as a business, I think that we will be very successful with it and that. So if there's any questions for me, anybody?
Yeah, one of the things is, is this person going to be an employee of the E D C?
They would be a city employee. The E D C, along with Troy, and I'll jump in here, as kind of Troy and I have talked about it, they would be a contractual employee with the city, much like the yoga person is at the community center, will ten ninety-nine them, and it would be, I mean, once we hire them and figure out, okay, we have enough farmers to start the market, you know, June second, then it would be the total amount that you have in front of you. If we can't find enough farmers to start that until June thirtieth, maybe that number's not quite what it is. But it's certainly, as Kathy said, to get there by seven and start checking people in, you know, it's a lot of commitment for the whole summer, you know, to spend eight hours a year Saturday there, whatever it ends up being. So our envision is that committee, along with Troy and myself, would interview that person.
So is that going to be an hourly position?
It would just be a contractual relationship that you have.
X amount of dollars.
Twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two Saturdays that you have to be there from seven in the morning to three in the afternoon, and you're going to get X amount.
Yeah, okay, okay. Have we talked about restrooms?
We have it, so the, the garbage we can handle, kind of like we've done for some of our races or special events. I can always get those event boxes from the.
Waste management.
Waste management, and pick them up if it becomes. We certainly have some of the other older trash cans that we had from the streetscape. We had a couple that, we gave a lot out to the nonprofit groups, but there were some that may need a little T L C, but we could probably make work back there.
Okay.
If the garbage boxes don't work. So far, they've worked for the vintage markets, and I, and I think could work for that as well.
So restrooms.
But the restrooms, I think, for the park, that, that would be not included, that wasn't included in our budget and probably should be, at least one.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Yeah. Your flyer, the map, the flyer is to go to potential farmers?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I was gonna say the map is trying, as far as trying to get somebody to come to our farmer's market is the wrong map.
Yes.
But this is strictly for people who would be local farmers that.
And we can tweak this, like, actually, the person who did kind of the graphics on this is a retired gentleman from the auto industry that does a nice job with like historical society stuff and barn layouts, sort of things like that. And so he helped us, but he would be more than willing to put any map we, we have into that box, yep.
Yeah, we know what that is, but somebody from Yale may not know.
And he's, M nineteen needs to be more prominent, the side streets, yep, absolutely.
Yep, okay. Questions, comments, council?
Yes, I have some, a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the fees go, how much lead time do we, will we take the application? If somebody shows up onsite, is that going to be an issue, and is this manager, market manager, going to be taking money as well if that happens, or?
We'll have to evaluate that as an E D C. I know the New Baltimore has a whole set of rules on when you have to pay. I think at their early onset, they were taking them right at the day of, you know, and, and yes, then the employee would, the, the market manager would take that money that day, you know. Certainly, early on, I think there will probably be people from the E D C and myself or Troy out there, the first couple, just, but we know that with all of our duties, twenty-two weeks at that amount of hours isn't necessarily feasible, but, you know, I think it'll be something that we grow into, maybe, once we get go, you know, the first couple times, if we have three farmers and a fourth farmer shows up, well, sure, we have room for you, come on in. As it grows, maybe by the middle of summer, hey, you need to be set the week before, you know, so I can see that kind of evolving, and as you know, from vendors, those day off kind of make it more difficult, but when you have two vendors in the parking lot and you're hoping for that third, you don't want to turn them away at the start until you get established. Once you establish, you may have to be kind of more diligent on, this is our rule, you need to be in, you know, with your money the week before.
Okay.
I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind. And that's partly to getting seasonal vendors, so they pay ahead of time, so at that point, we know that we'll have maybe a certain amount of people guaranteed every week. If they don't show, they don't show. But, and then also, I think with what John's saying, that we will probably have to have that in the beginning, especially where, and it'll probably continue on that way, where they show up, they pay there that day. And that's, again, a city manager, or, sorry, a market manager, that's why it's important, because that'll be something that they will be dealing with as we grow into this. So our first thought is, let's get some seasonal vendors in there, so we have something that we know we can kind of guarantee on a weekly basis.
Yeah, I agree, this market manager is very essential. As John mentioned, I have a lot of experience with running vendors for the good old days, and things just happen.
You know.
You have to kind of accommodate and try to figure out the best thing to do. So, yeah, I think it's very important, and you don't want to turn people away, but that'd be a good thing, if we have all twenty-two stalls filled up, that'd be great. And I just had one question on the form itself. The second line, the cost for each vendor would be fifteen dollars per week or two hundred dollars for the season. I'm assuming that we might need to add some, that's for per stall, right, fifteen dollars per stall? It doesn't say that there. Okay. It's not a big deal, but if you don't, don't assume that's.
Yeah, if they want to take up.
I want two stalls, it's, oh, you said it's only two hundred dollars for the season, but, well, no, it's gonna be four hundred dollars or whatever it is, because.
But it does say the size, Mike.
Yeah, it does, but it doesn't, but it's.
Yeah, if you have per.
Says stalls are nine by eighteen.
But it doesn't, but the cost for each vendor would be fifteen dollars per week or two hundred dollars for the season, but it doesn't say per stall.
Yeah, you want to make it perfectly clear.
Perfectly clear.
Yeah, yep. Okay, anything else? Given the outline on the map that you presented to us, we're still going to be able to, people are going to be able to walk right straight through, correct?
Correct, yes, yeah, from Main Street. I want the pedestrian traffic, absolutely, will come down, and we were starting to lay out, Troy has kind of an idea of like where the stalls will be, and, and, you know, I just gave you kind of the more general, because we're still, yeah, it's important to keep people coming in from Main Street.
Okay, and the hiring, again, is going to be done by yourself?
Myself, the, I mean, ultimately, I approve all employees.
That's all I'm asking, yes, okay. Okay, anything else?
I got one question. We're saying just food vendors, is that what we're?
Yes.
What about flower farmers? Flower farms you got, like Toits, Justco's?
Do you have? Yeah, actually, yes, we did discuss that.
So, what that has been determined is, is if they are a grower, they grow their own?
Yeah.
Then they are welcome.
Okay, so in that case, if it's brought in from another grower, and they just retail it, there, you would not be allowed in the farmer's market area?
As of right now, no, we are just the local growers.
Okay. And we're shooting for June second?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's coming up quickly.
Yeah, just a quick, since that's coming up so soon, how fast are we going to try to find this market manager?
Um, fast.
We have something, anybody?
Yeah, we, we have like a, and it was kind of how much information do I put in the packet? We, we have kind of a job description that New Baltimore shared with us, and some of the other markets that are kind of more advanced than we are currently have their market manager job descriptions on their, on their website, and then the farm, there's a, as with anything in Michigan, there's a Michigan Association of Farm Markets, and I'm probably saying it wrong, but who can also assist with us with like a job description, that sort of thing. So our intent was to get it out there locally through our website, tweak the job description with the information tonight, and get it out there. And then we've actually had some E D C members that have started to go, but they didn't really have something this nice to take, the kind of had information on who to call. We've talked to all of the farmers that were coming to the Wednesdays, and we've actually, I announced it at the elected officials forum, that we're working on it. I think Jamie got two phone numbers there, but I want to kind of get this document set before we hit them up with it.
Yes, and that's, we were waiting for council's approval before we really hit the ground running, and we're meeting again this Wednesday. This, our, our committee has been meeting now three weeks straight. We've been meeting on a regular basis, and I would imagine we're going to continue to meet every week until this gets off the ground.
Very good, very good. I have one suggestion for the committee. When you talk about signage, one of the things I've seen in some communities is they utilize the pole banners.
Yes.
And I would, I think that would be a much, it's going to be seen better than an A-frame down on the sidewalk. That's such a busy area with cars parked there a lot during the day, a lot of people aren't going to be able to see it.
The, the streetlight pole banners that are right in front of that area.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, to see that happen.
And we do, we have lots of ideas, but of course, we want to get started, and we want to actually see like a return on the funding coming back in, because we don't want it to be a drain on the city either. So as this grows, we'd like to see it launched on its own independently eventually.
And I, I know the city manager appreciates that, but I think city council would like to know what some of those ideas are, because maybe we want to budget more.
Oh, okay, absolutely then, yes.
Go to the administration and say, hey, we want to see this happen, and I'd rather spend, invest a little bit more on the get. And I'd rather spend, invest a little bit more on the get-go, which is what most businesses do, invest a little bit more upfront, and hopefully it'll pay off in the future.
Absolutely.
So I would like to, you know, maybe informational through our.
Yeah, I can put together the ideas.
Send us all kinds of stuff, just send us some of that stuff also.
More detailed budget breakdown.
Yeah, we're doing budget right now, so now's the time to do it.
Right, right.
You know, so, yeah. If there's something. So if Counsel feels that way?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Sounds like the committee's done a great job, love to see this happen in our community. It's another one of those things that brings people to the downtown and brings the community together. Okay, moving on. Did we vote on that?
We did.
No, we're not voting in a motion.
I did it myself. Yeah, we have a motion. Okay, is there any other discussion? Any public comments?
We never made the motion.
No, we never even made the motion?
Nope.
I'm sorry. I was so excited, I went right through.
Jumped right into it.
Is there a motion to be made then?
I make a motion to approve the informational pamphlet proposed operational budget and general market guidelines as stated above.
Support. Must have been made and supported. Thank you for catching that. Any other discussion on the item? Any comments from the audience on the item? Now that we have a motion. Back to the table? All in favor of the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay. City Manager comments, sir?
I know the City Treasurer, Angel Halffield, and myself briefed Counsel during the budget workshop that we're advancing on the switch over to the BSNA kind of accounting and finance software that the city's going to. Just for the residents out there watching, we do accept credit cards here at the City Hall now. We're looking at possibly expanding that in the future to the other facilities, but if you're here at City Hall paying your water bill or your tax bill, you can pay with credit card. Also, the online payments button on our website has been swapped out, and when you go to the city website, there's kind of four buttons across the center of the website, for lack of a better term, and on the far right one is online payments. That explains, once you click on that, you go to a landing page, it explains the online payment process and the fees associated with that. That's up and running. We're going to start to push that out to kind of market that. The Treasurer and I will be doing a focus program soon on that issue, and we're still tweaking it and adding things every week, kind of building around the modules that we're doing with the BSNA, but online payments and credit card payments are available on the website.
Very good. Okay, moving on, Counsel comments. Right? I'm good. Done? I'm good. Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you. Um, just reminder to vote tomorrow.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. We're open from 7:00 AM.
Is it?
Seven AM till 8:00 PM.
Yeah, okay, great. Dennis?
Nothing, no.
Nothing more to add?
I do have something. Number of golf carts registered the first week?
Twelve. Well, as of today, twelve.
Well, okay. Okay, has there been any problems?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, very good. The people that I've talked to, that I've run into are enjoying it, and it's doing exactly what I, I said it would do. People are starting to talk to people in their neighborhoods that they never talked to before, because they're going slowly around the neighborhood and, you know, with giving kids rides and whatnot, and seeing them, and people are stopping and talking, so I hope that continues. Seems to be a real positive in the community. MDOT, again, an update as far as our Main Street.
Yeah, it looks like, and I'm going from memory here, I believe they're starting the end of June. They did talk about doing as much of the work as possible at night, so that, you know, but lessens the impact. We are having a meeting with our state representative and myself on May 18th to go over that with MDOT and to be able to kind of get a little more detail, but in general, look towards the end of June for the micro-surfacing to be completed.
Okay. And also, there was a possibility of getting the painting, some of the lines back on Main Street.
From the email that I got back, it did not look like that was going to happen.
Is that right?
Yep, yep.
That's, it's sad.
It is.
Very, very sad. It's a good thing our state rep is involved in it then, so that.
And I'm hoping that.
You can see what these departments don't do.
Yes, change the location of the meeting to Richmond, just so that if I, you know, we may take them out there to a couple key locations on, if you're saying this is what's going to fix it, here's what you have.
Yeah, yeah. Then take them down in Muttonville and have them tell you where the, where the lane is, you know, where lanes are supposed to go, because not everybody lives in Richmond that come through here.
Right.
And people have no clue down there what to do.
Yep.
And we've been real lucky, we haven't had major problems down there. Okay, we go to the calendar today, being May 7th, we have a Planning Commission meeting on the 10th at 7:00. The Lois Wagner Memorial Library will have a puzzle competition on this Saturday, the 12th. It's called the Mother's Day Puzzle Competition. Check in to be in the competition is at 10:00 AM at the library and 10:15 AM start. Teams of two to four contestants will put together a 500-piece puzzle against rival teams. So come on in for a good time down there. Let's see, teams that do not win are welcome to stay until 2:00 to finish their puzzles. I'd be there till 4:00 probably. Light refreshments will be provided for all contestants. If you'd like to preregister, just call 727-2665. The event is free, donations are always welcome, and space is limited, so don't delay. So that's the Lois Wagner Memorial Library Mother's Day Puzzle Competition. The perennial plant in Ballb Exchange, that's very popular in our park, will be held on Saturday, May 26th at 9:00 AM. And the new location is the gazebo. It used to be always in the pavilion, it's going to be at the gazebo now, in the same park. We go to, happy Mother's Day to everybody on the 13th. 14th, there will be a library board meeting at the library at 7:00. The EDC will be meeting at 7:00 on the 17th, and a next regular scheduled City Council meeting, two weeks from tonight, the 21st, right here at City Hall. And that is it for the month of May to this, to that point. Is there any other comments to be made? There is no closed session. Is there any other business to the City Council? Being that a motion adjourned, be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Must have been made and supported, there's no discussion. All in favor of the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Against? Motion passes. Thank you for being with us this time.